This time, we have set aside minutes for public comment and as of 9:30 this morning, we have not received any public comment. So we will move along with our agenda and that is to welcome you to the December 11th, 2023, meeting of the Caldwell County Board of Education. We certainly are glad that you're here and after, you know, you came in a little bit late, probably wished you'd got here a little earlier. Such a fantastic performance by the South Caldwell Advanced Chorus. We are truly blessed to have such a talented group performing chorus tonight. Just a few weeks back, they were in Greensboro for the North Carolina School Boards Association and sang for about 30 minutes or so, 30, 45 minutes, as we were having our lunch at the conference there. And after, I received so many very positive comments about how great the chorus was. I mean, people were just so impressed and we, representing Caldwell County, were very proud indeed of the South Caldwell Advanced Chorus. Thank you all so much. We are very blessed to have you with us tonight as we have our Christmas meeting, I guess you might say. Next thing on our agenda is invocation for the board and tonight, I'm going to do that portion of the agenda. This is certainly a sacred and special time of the year for each of us. And in less than two weeks, students will be out on break and our most sincere hope is that they will spend these special days with their family and friends. Keep in mind that you only have 13 more days for shopping. I hope you are about finished, but most of us are probably still looking as we attempt to find that special gift for someone in our family or a close friend. We have often heard that it is better to give than receive. So as we are able and as we can, we might choose to give to those who need our help. There are many opportunities and worthy organizations that we can help and many of you already have. There are numerous nonprofits, businesses, and churches that are involved in toys for tots, angel trees, Christmas shoeboxes, and many other activities to make the season bright and magical for all children and youth here in our community and for that matter, in many other areas in the state of North Carolina and around the world. We send a heartfelt thank you to all you who give generously and care for others during this holiday season. Certainly, this is a season of light and giving and may your holiday be bright, joyful, and filled with goodness. May we pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is that we're going to have the South Caldwell Advanced Chorus lead us in our National Anthem. And after that, we will have three students from Granite Falls Elementary School, Caris Bryant, Maggie Legos, and Corinne Ryder will lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. So, of course, we look forward to the National Anthem. Thank you, Caris, Maggie, and Corinne for doing our pledge. And Mrs. Watts, thank you so much. We're so appreciative for bringing your group up here tonight. It was such a wonderful 30 minutes of music boys there and such a great rendition of the National Anthem. So, thank all of you and Merry Christmas to each of you. I know y'all probably gonna be leaving here, but thank you for being with us tonight and sharing with us. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is approval of the agenda. The board has had an opportunity to review this for a few days. Do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda as submitted? Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And motion passes.
Hey Darrell, do you want to ask if they want to come in and sit in the next empty chairs or standing up the hall?
Okay. There are seats up front here. Y'all want to come on in?
If you're standing in the back, there are seats in the front if you want to come on in.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. These are the minutes from our regular meeting on November the 6th, 2023. Do I hear a motion we approve the minutes as presented?
I note that we approved the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll see.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And that motion passes. Next is announcements and I want to recognize Mr. BJ Forham for some announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can't believe we're talking about 2024 now. It's just amazing how fast this year is. So the upcoming announcements for the board are on, our January 8th will be our regular board meeting, just like we're having tonight. On January 30th, we'll be doing school visits and we'll be going to Hybryton, Weeble, Lenore, Kings Creek, and Haddon Valley. We'll cover that eastern north side of the county. So we always look forward to school visits. They're more fun than anything we do. And then on February 6th, we'll have our work session preparing for our February meeting. While I have a minute, I have a point, just like wish everybody a very, very Christmas. High school guys, hope exams go well, then you can go decompress. What a wonderful job y'all did tonight. I'm just sitting here amazed at our students that are musicians, our students that are drama, our students that are artists that we'll recognize, our student athletes, and our academically students that just excel in everything. We're very lucky Caldwell County to have the student body lab and the teachers that take it to heart and just make these kids grow. So Merry Christmas to everybody and I'll turn it over to this Mr. Chairman.
And I'll turn it over to Dr. Phipps for more announcements.
Mr. Chairman, we hosted a conference for student and beginning teachers on November the 7th. This was at West Caldwell High School. We had a variety of breakout sessions that were offered in the event. I always wanted to publicly say it was sponsored, obviously, by the school system, but also the Education Foundation of Caldwell County, Pepsi, and Blue Ridge Energy. It was a great event. It's something that we hope we're able to do every year. For our public, I want you to know that our Christmas break this year will be observed beginning on December the 21st and students will return on January the 8th. Offices will be closed on the actual holiday days and early release will be observed on December the 20th. We're about to enter exam season as Mr. Forham mentioned and for our high school courses, just a reminder that attendance and being on time is very, very important. And then a word of celebration I wanted to share, we have some of the principals and teachers from some of these schools here tonight and I'd like to recognize them. We received growth data about a month or so ago, which is shameful when you think about it in North Carolina, that we're testing students in June or late May and we don't get all of the data back until the Christmas break. It's also shameful that we indicate quality of a school or student's performance on a single test score given on a single day. That's where we are. We're working on better accountability models, but with the growth data that's collected, we had six schools in Caldwell County that exceeded growth. We had one lack the year before. There were six this past year. I'd like to recognize Collesville, Dudley Shoals, Caldwell Early College, Lower Creek, Hudson, and Davenport. Davenport had a growth index of 5.17 and for folks in the public, that may not mean anything to you. You try to be zero or positive. And 5.17 is more than two standard deviations above the mean. It's incredibly strong performance for Davenport. And then all of our other schools that exceeded growth had growth scores of above two, which means that every one of those schools were at least one standard deviation above the mean. In addition, we had seven schools that met growth and I'd like to recognize those as well. Granite Falls Middle School, Caldwell Applied Sciences Academy, Bayton, West Caldwell High School, Hudson Middle, Whitnall, and Saw Mills. And I wanted to note that Collesville has been on the exceeded list for two consecutive years. If there are administrators or teachers or staff members from any of those schools, we'd just like to ask you to stand and I want to publicly recognize the hard work of folks in our buildings that are getting these kinds of results. Let's give them a round of applause. All of our folks do hard work. We certainly want to recognize those when they receive that type of results. Behind me on the two monitors on the wall directly behind me are the two Christmas card winners that were selected from our Caldwell County Schools students submissions. We had two categories this year, K-8 category and a 9 through 12 category. And if you take a look, the winner on the, that would be to your left is Leila Isbell from the 12th grader from Hybryton and on the right-hand side is a second grader from Davenport, Violet Youngsmith. And we'll have them with us in January and we'll be recognizing them publicly. But we wanted to share those with you with it being the Christmas season and we're very proud of the work that's been produced. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Dr. Phipps. Next, we have the honors and recognition portion of our agenda. We know that many of you have probably come for this. We truly enjoy recognizing our students and staff who do such a fantastic job. And leading us during this portion is Mrs. Libby Brown, Director of Community Services and Department of Information Office. We will move up front to congratulate those who are recognized tonight.
Good evening Chairman Pennell, Vice Chairman Becker, Board Members, and Dr. Phipps. What a lovely way to start our meeting. It really just has generated the holidays. This is a special person. Thank you for performing for us this evening. And we have a real treat for us this evening because we have just excellent students in our district who will be recognized for their achievements. And we're going to begin with our art students who have been selected to be in the Education Center Art Gallery. So parents, I hope you've had an opportunity to really enjoy those art pieces along the main hallway and they'll be on display actually for two months. So please come back anytime. We're open at the Ed Center and come back and enjoy them. We're going to start with Hybryton High School and Courtney Wright is principal and Jenna Bailey is art teacher. So if you'd like to come up and greet your artists and hopefully receive their certificates of achievement and their medallions from the Board of Education. So we're going to start with a senior and you can see these pictures here. Okay, so you can look at your favorite spot to look at these beautiful pictures and pieces of artwork. Louis Palvillon and Senior is that student with us? Louis! Louis! So Louis, congratulations. And beautiful Catherine Rivera Guentis, Senior also from Hybryton High School. Jenny Chase, Senior, Hybryton High School. Lily Hane, Junior, Hybryton High School. Ally Walker, Sophomore, Hybryton High School. Would you like to do this highlight? Okay, so we're just going to do Hybryton students and our art teachers and families. If you want to get in the center, we'll get a photo and parents, feel free to stand up. We don't want you to take pictures, represent, brag about your children because we certainly do. And Miss Bailey is the one who won the holiday contest with them. So excellent, thank you. And now we have South Caldwell High School on display for this month. And next, Rob List is principal and Mary Caldwell is the art teacher. Oh, I'm sorry, Donna. Donna, but Donna has joined that team and we're so grateful for that. So Donna, please come forward. We're sorry Mary couldn't make it, but you're representing South Caldwell tonight as their newest art teacher. So Chloe Iker. Chloe is a junior. Chloe here? Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna, if the student can't make it this evening, we're gonna hang on to the medallion so we'll get them. Addison Whitman. Azalia Mira, Senior. Ally Jernigan. Molly Blair. So we have the team from the center. That's right. So Ms. Nichols, Ms. Nichols, if you will get with Addison, that will be good. And then we have five of our elementary students from Davenport A+ School and Jessica Anthony is the principal and Janice Harris is the art teacher. So Ms. Harris, if you'd like. And we'll start out with our, one of our fifth graders at Davenport A+ School, Javaya Williams. Logan Aker. And we have April Rodriguez and April is a second grader. And we have a kindergarten student from Davenport A+ School, Javu Stepto. So. Excellent. And our final student that made it into the Education Center Art Gallery from Davenport A+ School is Leo Christman, a portrait. from Davenport A-plus School is Leo Christman, a fourth grader. So, we are very happy for these students, and our parents, I hope you've had a good time with their artwork. And we're gonna take a picture. Yeah. next couple of months. We're gonna now turn our attention to character education, and we love to spotlight one of our character education traits each month. In November, it was the trait of generosity, and that word is used quite often during the holidays, the generous giver and how generous they were with their holiday giving. But these students have demonstrated generosity all the time, and we're very proud of them, and we'd like to call them up. The first student is Bella LoPerfido from Gable Elementary School. Kathy Barlow is the principal. You're dressed for the occasion. So, and we have Zoe Smith. Zoe is from Caldwell Online Academy. Julie Hall is her principal, who is here with her, supporting her this evening. And we have Aiden Bolinter, and from West Caldwell High School, and Susan Walcott is the principal. And we also have wonderful seniors in our school district. We've been trying to capture all of our honor students in North Carolina Honors Course in the last couple of months. We are privileged to have with us our elementary honor students with us tonight. There were 400 students who auditioned for this prestigious statewide chorus. 178 were selected. Granite Falls Elementary seems to always send students who are at that caliber to be selected in the North Carolina Honors Course. We attribute that to Andrea Evans, the course director, and her great instruction. We would like to recognize now, fifth grader Margarita Lagos, who has made it her second year. So, congratulations for the North Carolina Honors Course. Ms. Evans, would you like to come up with them and greet them? And also Courtney Saunders, principal, is here, and I know she's very proud of these students, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we also have two fourth graders from Granite Falls Elementary School, Corinne Ryder, if you'd like to come up and get your certificate. And Karis Bryant. We're very proud of all three of you. Beautifully dressed, and just very proud. South Caldwell High School's chorus, honor of the, well, the, what course? Advanced choir, because there's several that they allow students to participate in. And we have some honor students from this advanced choir that we would like to recognize tonight. So, we have, oh, and Bernadette Watts, the wonderful director. Bernadette, come up and greet them. I don't think Mr. Bliss is here this evening from South Caldwell, but Bernadette is here. We're so glad to have you back in the studio, Phil. So, thank you for being back within our ranks, and we would like to recognize four of your students, and they're all outstanding. These four actually participated in the North Carolina Honors Course this year for 2023. Over 1,000 students auditioned for this chorus, and there were 176 seats selected. So, we have both Spartans in those 176 seats. We're very proud of you. Josiah Worsley, Josiah was selected. Josiah was selected number one base, two in the state. He had the number one position in the state. Katherine Mara Diago. Number 10, selected number 10, tenor one in the state. Michaela Ostelus. Selected number six in soprana two in the state. And our Carson Webb, so Carson Webb. Carson was selected number three in tenor one in the state. So, I know you're very proud of them, and just a beautiful, inspiring music that comes from this group of students. And thank you for your leadership, and let's give them another round of applause. They were gonna have Hybryton. Yes, Justin Gray. So, we have been trying to make sure we captured all of these students who made the honors chorus. So, Justin Gray, we're gonna get him the certificates and the medallions to this, because they actually could make it this evening. So, we've been trying between all the concerts, holiday concerts, so thank you for being here. Justin is the Hybryton High Chorus Director, and he also had four students to make the honors chorus, and we like to recognize everyone at this level. So, I'm going, I think Eduardo Gutierrez is here. He's a senior. And Zane, Zane Fall. Zane Fall is here. So, Zane is also a senior. He is also a senior. We're very proud of you. And Haley Goble, Haley Goble, a senior, and Paul Vanitsky also made it. So, we won't require you to sing like South Caldwell chorus did tonight, but I'm sure you can handle it. Let's give them another big round of applause. Yeah, that's it. I think we have one more. If you'll just stay up there, Mr. Penell.
As you can see by some of the reactions, this is a surprise to some folks. So, good afternoon. My name is Chris Becker. I'm the Vice Chair of the Caldwell County Board of Education. It is my honor and privilege to recognize Mr. Darrell Pennell, Chairman of the Caldwell County Board of Education, for his outstanding service, not only to Caldwell County, but also to public education across the state, as he faithfully served over the past year as President of the North Carolina School Boards Association. It's been a year of opportunity for Darrell to travel to all the educational regions in the state, as he displayed an unwavering commitment to collaborating and partnering with school boards who represent every educational agency in North Carolina. His focus continues to place the education and needs of students first. His tenure as President of the North Carolina School Boards Association is a hallmark accomplishment for a Caldwell County Board of Education member. He represented this board, as well as all those in public education leadership, with dignity and the highest level of commitment. On behalf of the Board of Education of Caldwell County, we'd like to present this plaque to you, Darrell, that reads, and this is extremely important, "Together, we will continue to make a lasting positive impact," excuse me, "impact on education in North Carolina." Darrell?
I don't really know what to say, because this was absolutely a surprise. I did not expect this at all. It has certainly been a pleasure to observe as President of the North Carolina School Boards Association this past year, and to be involved all across the state, and to travel to other areas of the country, going to Washington DC to meet with some of the congressmen there, and Chicago, and a few other places that I've gone to represent North Carolina, but also to represent Caldwell County. And I think it is a great honor that, I just can't imagine that I've been in this position for this past year. I wanted to serve honorably to represent Caldwell County, and it's been an exciting year, and I truly appreciate this award, and I really absolutely did not expect it at all. But thank you to the board. We have a great board, and they're a hard-working board. We have work sessions. We have other things that we attend, going to visit schools. I think BJ was talking about that was coming up. And we go to many other events, sporting events, concerts, plays, those kinds of things. So, it's a busy work we do, and this is a fantastic group of people that I have the privilege of working with. And I thank them, and I thank Dr. Phipps. He is the Superintendent of the Year in the State. I think it was just really amazing that I was in the position I was in, and he was in the position of being Superintendent of the Year in the state of North Carolina. And I guess I might also add that Dr. Porch down at the community college is President of the Year for Community Colleges in the state of North Carolina. I doubt seriously there's ever been a county in the state that in the same year had all three of those positions. So, I am honored to be one of those three, along with Dr. Phipps, who is absolutely fantastic, and Dr. Porch, who is down at the community college. Dr. Porch was actually a former student of mine, and I enjoyed him when he was a high school student, and he's doing a fantastic job down there. Thanks again for this, and let me just say that if you need to leave at this point, the business session is coming up. So, you may not want to stick around for the business session. Chorus, thank you very much. Thoroughly enjoyed your concert. Y'all have a Merry Christmas and a great 2024. item is, I want to recognize Assistant Superintendent Annie Poole.
Good evening, Chairman Pennell, Vice Chairman Becker, members of board, and Dr. Phipps. My only item tonight is the resolution to sell Western Nor elementary school. As discussed at the board work session on December 1st, the following resolution has been drafted, and I believe you all have a copy in front of you. Whereas the Board of Education owns the improvements on lands located on about 125 Maple Drive Northwest, in northern North Carolina, also known as Western Nor Elementary School. The Board of Education determined on April 6, 2023 via a resolution that the use of the property is unnecessary and undesirable for public school purposes, and the Board of Education desires to dispose of the property, and the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners has declined the opportunity to obtain the property, and the Board of Education intends to dispose of the property pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A, Article 12. And the Board of Education has received, solicited, or negotiated certain offers to purchase the property pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A-269. The Board of Education has received upset bids and re-advertised those offers pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A-269. And whereas HASO Holdings LLC was the highest bidder, having placed a bid in the amount of $300,000, that was And whereas HASO Holdings LLC was the highest bidder, having placed a bid in the amount of $300,000, that was not upset. And whereas the Board of Education desires to accept the aforementioned offer and sell to the highest bidder, HASO Holdings LLC. Therefore pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 115C-518 and North Carolina General Statute 160A-269, the Caldwell, Caldwell County Board of Education accepts the offer from HASO Holdings LLC to purchase the property for the amount of $300,000 and directs the Superintendent to take all necessary actions for the board to collect payment and said sum and to thereafter convey the property to HASO Holdings LLC with a closing date to be set for on or before January 25th, 2024. At this time, I respectfully request your approval of the previously read resolution.
Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution concerning the sale of Westonore Elementary School and its property?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to accept the offer for $300,000. Sell Westonore Elementary School.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anybody have any comments or questions in regards to this?
I, I know it's bittersweet, it's a piece of history for the school system seeing that. In interest of the expense to keep it and the taxpayers, we're better off getting it off our own. But a lot of amendments have been made there over the years. It's going to be hard to delay.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Next, Human, uh, Human Resource Services Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Bill Griffin.
Chairman Penel, Vice Chair, Becker, members of the board, Dr. Phipps. I had before you this evening several items, starting with category seven, Human Resources Assistant, Bill Griffin, and subject A, Human Resources Usual and Customary Informational Items. I respect the request, uh, excuse me, this item is just for information only and you guys do have that information and required for action, I apologize. The second one does however, and that's subject B, Human Resources Usual and Customary Action Items, uh, contracts. Respect the request, uh, motion to approve those as presented this evening.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the Human Resource Services Usual and Customary, uh, Action Items as it relates to contracts?
Chairman Penel, I move that we approve Usual and Customary Action Item, Contract, and Action Item.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Thanks Assistant Secretary, Human Resources Usual and Customary Personnel Action Items, that are substitute lists. I'm grateful that we do have some more, uh, employees and substitutes here. So if you would, uh, please, uh, make a motion to approve Human Resource Usual and Customary Personnel Action Items, uh, substitute lists as presented this evening.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the Human Resource Usual and Customary Personnel Item as it relates to, uh, substitutes and as presented by Dr. Griffin?
I'll move that we approve the new substitute list.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
Any questions? I counted 27 there, that's a pretty good group. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion passes.
Great, thank you. And then finally, subject D, uh, December Board Transfers for 2023, 2024. Make a motion to approve the December Board Transfers as presented this evening. Total transfers requested are 31. Total transfers recommended for approval are 29. Transfers not recommended for approval, two, for a total approval of 2023, 2024, school year of 1,515.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the December Board Transfers for 2023, 2024?
Chairman Penel, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Griffin.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Educational Program Services Assistant Superintendent, uh, Dr. Katrina McKellin.
Good evening Chairman Penel, Vice Chairman Becker, members of the Board of Education, and Dr. Phipps. This evening I've become before you to request the approval of the Memorandum of Understanding which being Caldwell Community College and Technical Institute in Caldwell County Schools as it relates to our Career and College Promise Programs. So this memorandum outlines the pathways available to students, whether it's through a college transfer pathway, a career and technical education pathway, some more course continuing education, or our cooperative innovative high schools, which would be Caldwell, Early College High School and Caldwell Applied Sciences Academy. Um, policies and procedures related to the Career and College Promise Program and how both institutions will work together for the benefit of our students. So this evening I respectfully request your approval of this Memorandum of Understanding.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the Memorandum of, of Understanding that, uh, Dr. McKellin has alluded to with CCC and TI?
I have a quick question. None of the wording changed from the work session.
No, sir.
Then I'll make the motion to accept the Memorandum of Understanding.
Is there a second? Any questions, comments?
I'll comment, it's one of the greatest resources we have for our students. And, and the parents have saved a ton of money, uh, being able to send their college.
Yep, you're right. Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. McKellin. Next, we have Assistant Superintendent CFO, David Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members, and Dr. Phipps. So tonight I'm seeking approval for the budget resolution, um, for 23, 24. This is the same information that we covered in detail after the work session, last work session. The resolution is in quite a bit different format. Um, the resolution calls for a balanced budget by fund. 115C, 426 actually specifies that it's, uh, a required format by the local government. I'm going to go through the appropriations and expenditures which do balance by revenue. For Fund One, which is a state level school fund, um, total appropriations of 85 million, 85,924 dollars. For Fund Two, the current expense fund, 20 million, 882,955. For the special grants fund, 6 million, 455,453. For the federal grants funds, 22 million, 141,792. Capital outlay, 6 million, 556,526 dollars. And for our enterprise funds, which would include our children's fishing, we're operating, um, 11 million, 474,378 dollars, which would bring the total budget for Caldwell County Schools at this point to 152 million, 597,028 dollars and thirty cents. We would be looking for some additional, um, program or attempts that we not yet received from, uh, State Technical School at this time.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we approve the 2023, 2024 budget resolution as presented by Mr. Johnson?
I'll make the motion to approve the budget as presented.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
Any comments or questions? It's, uh, it's getting to be kind of, uh, old hat to do this later in the year.
Yet, uh,
It's usually October, maybe October, the earliest.
It certainly will be, it certainly will be nice if the, uh, you know, the budgets pass, but it's, um, so late in the year. It takes DPI a while to get, uh, our allocations out, once the budget's finalized. The salaries and benefits are covered, we'll concentrate on those. If the budget doesn't pass early October, we, we, uh, we never, never got changes without October coming.
Well, we certainly appreciate the job that you and your partner do.
I don't, I don't truly understand, we have to have a balanced budget by the end of June, is that correct?
Um, we have to, we have to actually request, uh, send a request to the Commissioners about the May 15 deadline.
Right. But the state didn't get it, but, um,
Exactly.
It's a weed, you shoot in the dark, I don't know about that. Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say aye. Hearing none, it is approved. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next, I'd like to call on our Superintendent, who's given us a report, uh, on, uh, state board meetings that he's been attending.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we met last Wednesday and Thursday, just wanted to give you three highlights, good news, information. The first is a procedural operational type thing for those of us that are doing the work of the General Assembly and also what the State Board directs. And that is the Parents' Bill of Rights template was to be released. We actually had a webinar today and it's created in such a way that it's plug and plug. Uh, it, it gives us an idea of what's required in the law. And then we can go in as a, what they call a public school unit now, PSU, and put in the applicable or relevant information to answer that particular question. And once we get the whole document completed, then we've met the requirements of the law. So we're very grateful for the time that DPI spent creating that to help us be consistent and make sure we've got all of our bases covered. There's also great news, it was released on DIBELS, the early literacy piece for North Carolina. North Carolina students in across all grade levels assess grades, kindergarten, first and second grade. When they look at where students are at the beginning of the year, the North Carolina students in those grade levels were above the nation in the areas that they assess, which is a good indicator of early literacy for us. And then also on a, a separate report, but also good news, on the high level testing that happens with AP, Cambridge courses, and international baccalaureate programs, there are three different types of areas there with, with high level courses. North Carolina outpaced the nation again. Uh, our scores increased significantly more than the national average. And we're also seeing a significant number of students in those classes with enrollment, uh, going up. We've also noticed that in Caldwell County. In fact, we've almost doubled what we had in terms of students taking AP classes from last year. And the success rate continues to rise. So, uh, in addition to Career and College Promise, these are highly rigorous, with high levels of expectations, academic, uh, involvement. And we're grateful to have that opportunity. But we're really grateful that we can talk about great success locally and also at the state level. So just want to share that with you.
Thank you, Dr. Phipps. Next item on our agenda is for me to convene to a closed session. Do I hear a motion that we, uh, go to closed session?
Chairman Penel, I move that we go to closed session to sort to the agreement for this.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll be in closed session, we do not expect any action once we come back. Thank you all for being here. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you.